Next matter on this board tonight will be C 2606, 313 Zax, 319 West Jersey Street, West Jersey Street Holdings, LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, City of Yale, 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 and the House of Representatives, West Jersey Street Holdings. This is an application for this property before this board in 2006 proposing a condominium project of 40 years. Unfortunately, in a time economic downturn, the project was never built. We're back here now for a multi-family project, smaller than Zax, maintaining same quality of product here at the time. It's consistently more affordable in the residential zone, is permitted use in zone of town or conditions, that's why we're holding this 40-year condition of use. There are some...
Our question?
Our floor. There are some design labels and variances associated with the application, however, it was by a testimony of architect and our planner, which you here could address any of those comments. We also had opportunity to receive a view letter from our consultants in line with any of these terms or conditions. So that's another big project now, in case upon the plans that were submitted, and also being the non-erasure today, it's a very attractive project that will be revitalization of this area. Would I like to do first preliminary questions to Paul Montalvo, the property, Mr. Allen Woyen, testified here in 2006 in connection with the previous application? All that, how do you understand that this is an entire project? He did ask that, and the comments made in previous check.
Mr. Chairman?
Stand up, please.
Mr. President?
Mr. Allen, would you explain again why you're here today, because this was approved as a large project?
Yes, this was approved.
Congratulations.
Correct.
Would you explain again why you're here? I don't get that part.
We're here for similar approvals of what we're seeing going here in the lesser code than we were here in 2006. It's a different project, it's smaller, there's a different layout, and although we're before this board again, we're getting new experiences, so it's a new site and new experience in the city of North Jersey.
Basically, you're doing a large form, a smaller scale?
Yes, yes.
Okay, stand up, please. Anthony, you want to join in? You broke your solid three square. The testimony you're giving is private, you don't have to do this. Have a seat, please. Anthony Delbrad, 320 East, 23rd Avenue. Mr. Allen Woyen, State Director. State Attorney, Attorney General.
Allen Woyen, U T R, 5th Building, North Avenue, Union. Mr. Woyen, as I indicated in my opening, you're the owner of the project, the problem of my visa approval, just. And firstly, would you provide us a brief background of your experience in development, particularly in the city of North Jersey?
Um, I haven't been discussing property, which I presented you with the listed. Um, we started in 1957, as we follow, and also, now it's not a cousin of mine. Basically, we built a similar project at this during the timeframe of approvals for West Jersey Street, located in 351 South Orchard, which was a 24 condominium project.
What do you work here? Projects of the home business. And you've built other projects, in fact, I think you have a commercial project, a portfolio of locations, I heard.
We don't measure money. Let me introduce projects in the city of North Jersey, the streetsave, comes with county quarters with the list.
Okay. Now, similar to the questions as to the councilman, if you could please address the correctional intent of satisfying more detail, it changes.
Mr., would you sit back? When I don't see a place for you to work at.
If you could explain the major differences between the project that was approved in 2006 and what was proposed at this time?
The project before was a 40-year condominium project, I believe it was on four stories, 10 units per story, and then it was another project that I had helped on. Basically, the units varied from 1350 square feet to 2000 square feet at the time, the market had drawn the economy to the right. Basically, I helped on the property, maintaining the property, and now I'm here today to come back in and do three stories, basically, 12 rooms per story, two bedrooms, I think they're 170 square feet.
And despite the reduction in size of the project, are you still maintaining the model that was part of the previous project?
Same, well, it's going to be pouring plank on the sides, and then there we are, and then the front, this is a working side. Basically, this is the apartment.
So, you're running the project?
Yes, I am, yes.
And what research did you do within, what is your feeling on the project, this nature in this area of city of North Jersey?
During the, during the part of the, our family wants, many of those apartments around town, definitely a problem with this, that we also maintain for 45 years, we built on the stocks, and basically, there is this, units is, and all to follow.
And what areas of this location of town for this type of?
We always have a West Jersey Street, it was always in the center point of, um, where you have the district, business district, also Saint George area, Orchard, West Hill Avenue, it was always in the, in the center of all those major districts, so people would go by. Basically, I did the project on the avenue, which was right next to Dr. Don's, 711, shopping side, I thought that, and so, I saw the way that the city was moving, of course, as I know, it's a, basically, I saw the way it was going, people were in different shops, though, I'm going on the streets there, and I said, you know, I want to go back in through this type of.
So, and all professional planning testifying, details of, you're reading as developer differs, rating out of land needs in the areas for the residents to take advantage?
Absolutely, there's one in the park of the street, it's called, like I said, this business district is a little bit.
Thank you. I have no further questions at this point in this time.
Commissioners, any questions?
Yes, I'd like to now, um, architect, just, I'm this.
Could you raise your hand, please, sir? Could you solid three square, the testimony you're giving, this matter will be approved? The whole truth, and nothing else to prove?
Yes.
Sit down, please. Use the microphone, give your name and address for the record, please.
Francisco Lenders, 25, 22 East, Scriptive Avenue, Jersey. F R A N S P I S O, Lenders, N E R, E N, D C. There are.
N E R, right?
N E R. Yes, N E R. N E B T A.
That makes sense.
Mr. Woyen, if you could please give, or I believe you testified before this board before, if you could briefly provide any license, if you have all educational background, areas, please, in which you testified before this or the boards?
I obtained any bachelor in architecture from New Jersey's Bureau of Technology. I have a license, private architect, in the state of Jersey, state of New York, and I have qualified to sell the board.
Thank you very much. You've heard my ability to state in the testimonies of our disappointing, if you could first take the words through the, the elevations and then your, this is the way structure?
Yeah, the elevation of West Jersey, we made it with a brick stock, canxle shingles for the roof, smoking roof, and we have some aluminum panels, and of course, we moved some, and side doors to the top.
And the, we have it mounted there, that's clearly a mounted version of the, the plans that were submitted?
Yes.
Now, does the building maintain aesthetic qualities around this experience, even with the, the front end has great highlights and accents, but is the bouncing structure also maintaining the quality of materials?
Yes, it does, that's why I'm like, the size.
And I also noticed from the, did your firm base such to second, the sound, or to drive that in the character?
Yes, it does. I'm a, I'm a detective, and now, we're in a shadow, a shadow.
And would you can now briefly take the words through the, the floor plan?
Ground floor will be dedicated for parking. We have two stairs that are coming down, and then it will have three floors above, residential, 36 units, all units will be two bedrooms, and the landing units will become a background slightly larger, and that's, they're all communicated through a central corridor. Each unit will have an balcony, and four bedrooms, one bathroom, and, and, and three floors are pretty much, the second floor, a pretty much.
And from a, from an architectural standpoint, do you have any common line with any terms or conditions in your product's whole letter? The building will comply with all the local codes, including ADA? I have no further questions, Mr. Woyen, this is.
Commissioner, any questions for you on the back?
Thank you.
If, Mr. Woyen, I didn't hear, I'm not going to get into that.
Mr. Tom?
Mr. Chairman, that's a bad, it's, it's like. I was not there in 2006, so I just wanted a little very brief comparison. The footprint in 2006 compared to today's footprint, has it changed? Building footprint? I think our site engineer can come up with that, but I can't indicate it. Okay, that's what I'm saying. So he asked the footprint, they got a site plan.
Just, any other question? I have a question, just to confirm, the, the way that the parking is, is today is exactly the way that it approved back in 2006?
Yes. Genuinely, yes, I'll let our site engineer address that in more detail. Do comply with the requirements? I'd like to now call on, for, for, this is a professional, if you have a professional plan.
Wait, here, come. Solid three square, any testimony you're giving, American, please, but nothing else to prove?
Yes, sir.
Name and address for the record, it's coming in.
Well, approved, Anderson Frank, U D, address is 2052, probably 35, I'm the largest, and site engineer.
And leave this through as a review for this board, the recommendations? And you need to indicate what license and control you will be testifying in, see if both that's a professional, you have a professional plan, is that correct?
Yes, my professional engineer license in Jersey, while my professional plan license in Jersey.
Thank you. You've heard my ability to state in testimony both, my ability to state in the testimony of this point, and that of architect, Mr. Woyen, if you could first take us through the existing conditions in, over the area of this project?
Sure, just specifically, this is tax law number 13-1812, program, 313, 319, West Jersey Street, it's located between West End and the marketplace, in the city of North Jersey, so, and that, of course, is a multifamily policy, community, community is, lot itself, 100 by 250 feet deep, is a running forward width, across West Jersey Street, by 250 feet, 25,000 square feet. It's a community that is primarily a mix of single multifamily residential, it sits kind of in the heart of that residential area, that has Mark Avenue, expanding, further roads to the west, which will have been to the north, 27th Avenue, West Street to the east, a lot of commercial areas, mounted for long distance, also, several, parks and, at least near there, as well, for residents.
Site itself?
Yeah, now, we want to, the site itself.
The site itself, when we were here in 2006, at the time, had a, one way frame, building that was I, the service residence, and all this, and this has been demolished. There were several setbacks, particularly to not comply with the ordinance, with the front door setback, which was shy of 30 feet required, and the side door setback, which was almost half of the 20 feet required. It's a general flat site, with those former infrastructure on the site, utilities are available for West Jersey Street, limited vegetation on the property.
Now, if you could briefly describe, before getting into the details of the, the site plan, an overview of the difference between the previously approved project and what was proposed this evening?
Sure, then you heard from the developer and from the architect, and I've heard some commissioners about the footprint, the footprint of the building is essentially the same as was previously approved. The seven differences are that it's gone from a six-story structure down to a four-story structure, converted from, having, selling, so, rental apartments, and unit counts, going from 4 years down to 36 years, and average apartment size, average unit size has been reduced, from about 200 to 175 square feet per unit. As I said, the general footprint of the building will find the side, and your setbacks are the same, as you see on exhibit A1, the buildings generally essentially located, there are, there's a small area, buildings can be, south west corner, the services lobby, elevator, mechanical, and stairs, it's a secondary stair tower, this is what the , uh, units on the board.
And are you, now, referring to A1, right? And that's a, now, you apologize for the, the site plan?
Yes, the site plan, and I've seen it superbold, and I follow that, and compared with the site plans that were submitted, it's been, it's beyond question. There's also a secondary stair tower, at the, at least one of the structures, otherwise on the ground surface, the surface area parking, double stack parking on the inside, central drive aisle, and this, again, consistent with the previous approval from, so from the, site plan from a recent point, it's a very similar site plan, in parking arrangement, setbacks, the utilities are saying that brought in from West Jersey Street, there is floor water collection, and form of toilets on the east and west side of parking lots, that through the stormwater, and through the series of, driveouts, flats, of the building, as consistent with the previous application, known as supported by, you're sold, or results, so again, that has not changed, so it's the, is essentially the same, which is designed really to, to bring aesthetic appeal to the streetsave there, to provide some trees and vegetation of the front of the building, to complement the architectural elements of the front of the building.
In particular, in our commissioners in here, could you briefly comment on the amount of, of plantings that we had? New plantings that we had?
Sure, there are approximately 60 plantings, and one of the trees, since it never was dropped, and, uh, grassed.
Thank you.
There is a, a single light on the west side of the building, but service centers that will provide a downers light, towards a, the walkway, as you see on exhibit A1, it's on diesel, there's a walkway that has been from the public sidewalk on the west side of the main entrance driveway, and then service hall, as well as side of the buildings, there's a location there. There are also two electric type streetlights on either side of the driveway, providing a combination driveway area. We had reviewed the article consults letter, which recommended a, some shield to be provided on the plank on the western side of the building, and we agreed to comply with that recommendation. Just to specifically point out, from a parking standpoint, there are seven required parking spaces, there are seven, who require, and the residential site, the proven standards, those spaces also include two leading out, accessible spaces, within the parking areas. From a zoning setbacks standpoint, as I said previously, this footprint, the site plan, mirrors the 2006 approval, the front setbacks, 20 feet from the front right of the line, the side door setbacks are five point eight feet, consistent with the previous approval, and variances created at that time. And the parking setbacks, four and a half feet, where three feet is requested, the science standards, again, that's consistent with the previous approval in 2006. Parking stalls are nine by 20 feet, where it's 918, where 10 by 19 feet is requested in order to be consistent with 2006 approval.
And could you briefly provide, this is, this is a, testimony regarding the size of those parking stalls?
Sure, the, the design standards for, are created between nine and 10 feet, as far as industry standard, generally, when we design ten-foot wide parking space, that's usually the situation when we're in a shopping center, where you have shopping carts, and more frequently getting out of parking spaces, in a controlled residential, I guess, 95 is a separate standard, again, it's considered as, 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 as,
And from the, before you mount your professional plan testimony, do you have any problem line with any of the other terms or conditions of the new part of the consulting, you better do your job, deliver five, 2012?
No, all the comments in there are technical in nature, I mentioned, I gave the comments that will apply with the, 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 the one, the one, that we point out is on page two of the variances, maybe if I, A, notice a fence or screen is required of the parking area, which was not, I don't know, in the site plan, it wasn't conditioned last approval, we put a fence around the parking area, to satisfy that, and eliminate the need for, 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 for,
Thank you. Now, move on now to the planning testimony, in support of the variance, conditions, variance being so, all your hands out. What we're handing out here are copies, reduce copies of A1, now.
Sure, for the planning perspective, what I've done is broken down the variances and measures into a two to three categories, offices, so, we need applications, we're making three applications that was approved in 2006, there are some variances, maybe sort of granted, some in a modelized scale, and I'll do then, in, rooting, so, the first of which is the variances that have not changed in 2006 approval, and there are three available, the first, I saw, related to the lot itself, and therefore cannot be changed, as the lot tell, as the minimums change, which will give the free required, as well as the values, standards, this lot is 50 feet, as a match to the character of the neighborhood, who require. Due to the, 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 Yes, the, the property, as I said, will be fenced in, so that will be screened provided for the surrounding property, so we'll try to take that landscaping, again, this is from 2006, we took that landscaping and brought it towards the front of the property, wanting our, our purchase to complement these sets of building.
Thank you.
Next, variances to discuss, as to the conditional use requirements that apply for multifamily residential buildings in the office zone. We are seeking to leave, from the conditional use requirements, as the board, I'm sure is very familiar, Public interest quarters, where, versus Westwood's case, guides us in applying those standards. And what that says is that conditional uses are considered a permanent use with certain conditions, and that those uses are therefore appropriate for the zone. What we really need to look at are the specific conditions imposed, now the coordinates of the use. Specifically, there are four conditions associated with multifamily buildings. First is a lot area for a glowing unit, where four hundred square feet is required. Previous application, six hundred and twenty-five square feet per glowing unit, that is increased to six hundred and ninety-four square feet. So we're not complying on improving that condition. There's also a lot area for eleven square feet, where it's square feet. Previous application is a hundred and twelve point five square feet, and that's being increased to a hundred and forty-seven square feet. So that also is applying and improving condition in the previous application. The next component of the conditions requirements, as to the open setbacks, and that is the condition that deviated in the previous application, and deviates again in this application. There are different criteria for setbacks based upon height of the building. Previous application, where we were rated for five stories, it was based upon, on the half of the building height, was the setback to each of the yards, and that equated to a thirty-five, forty-six inch setback requirement for each of the yards. With this application, if you heard, previous testimony, this application has been reduced for a four story building, that changes the setback requirements now to three quarters or seventy-five percent of the building height. And actually increases the setback requirement to forty-three point I says, or less than forty-four feet. So by lowering the building, we follow a different pattern, actually, our, our burden of an increase setback, based upon, you know, this type of cases and percentages. As I said, the setbacks haven't changed from the previous application. The only thing that intensifies this variance is the, the standards applied because of the difference of percentage of building weight that is allowed in setback. And that is the reasonable requesting, the condition use would be, for this board. There are two more components of the conditional use requirements that are not applicable to this, to this site design, we should say, they have to hold variations in yard depth, where the walls are parallel to the rock buildings, and reductions in house at the side, which again, are not applicable to this set of ones. As I said previously, you're aware that the case law, the standards apply for conditional use requirements, focuses on deviations that exist on the use, and really, not destroyed with the negative standards on that whole, the negative articulations are not with the application. In this case, as I said, the setbacks, the physical setbacks of the building have not changed on the previous application. It is the, the requirements that have increased by about twenty-three percent. When we look at the area, the size, the face of the property, and just the building, it would come down by about thirty-three percent, so there's an uptick in the setback requirement of mass standpoint, the building is below about thirty-three percent, the function in the face area is approaching there. So there, there is no aesthetic difference in the previous application to the application of the previous building height. And because of that, it will not substantially impair the intended purpose of zone plan or of the public building. So when we weigh the positive and negative criteria, benefits outweighed, detriment will be the worst, would effectively, from this variance. The final variance is being requested, past the rule of space, and that's been modified as a 2006 application. And as you're aware, the various of the package, based upon size and, and, and 2006 application, it was a variance granted, for that, it's only a thousand seven, it's three square feet is required, a thousand and two hundred and nine square feet provided, and that was provided with open spaces around the building. As I said before, that hasn't changed, so it's consistent with open spaces around the building in the previous application.
I'm sorry, can you just slow down, consistent?
In, consistent with the previous application. Open space is also applied in the form of balconies for each of the units. Previous application, it was included, because of the design, our texture, these balconies are not included, because they're not quite six feet deep, they're five feet five to five feet ten and maybe ten. So from a, that half the standpoint, those balcony areas are not included, but it should be pointed out as a board, that each of these units does have a balcony. That provides open space for each of the units, provides regular chairs and seating outside. Third component, open space, is consistent with previous application, in the form of the rooftop terrace, and that, we saw in architectural assess, commended in favor of the, the, the rule, which we've also said, please give any, the context of the neighborhood. In looking at the open space requirements, and looking at the purpose for open space in these, like, it's obviously to provide a relief for residents to be outside, as I said, these are previous has, balcony, that's available for the use, there is a part of the passage that are created. This is also a area, as I said, previously, as I described, this is surrounded up with the size by very strong and growing commercial cars, which are repellers, more avenue and the growth of the commercial cars, the size of this, so it is clearly a walking community, and you have it developed to this size, we're not in the limits of units, where, where less than fifty units here. It's really, from a planning perspective, I think better to have the tenants and residents of this apartment utilize the available public facilities in the area, and become a part of the neighborhood. Specifically, this case, as we said, where an echo park is two thirds of a mile west, that's, that's a couple of amenities in that part. It's also a corporate apartment, which is nine acres, that's only a quarter mile away, you know, or, by an alley street. It's also provides ample space for open walking distance of this facility. So where the open space requirements aren't met in the area on the property itself, there are numerous opportunities for this space improved, recreation, residents within walking distance. In looking at the variances required, we look at the positive and negative criteria associated with the variances. As far as the positive criteria, there are several processes of the units, or, and this fall, which are advanced. With this development, and with the open space, it's required as it is, purpose A, is to reverse personal action, guide the overall use of open balconies and stay in the manner.
Can, would you slow down, please?
Purpose E, reverse personal actions, guide the corporate use for development of all things in state, in a manner which will promote public health, safety, while also promote other benefits. As I stated before, there is ample open space within the area, and within walking distance of their balconies, or easier to use of this, open space within the area. Most of the other public, this will give a good condition to the community by installments and voluntary. Purpose E, means by this all, is to promote established, appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the building, persons, neighborhoods, communities, communities, and deserve the environment. This is a development, a strong inventory of residential facilities in this neighborhood, is a mix of something on, and, and, and this. And again, there is adequate, open space that provides a good mix in the area of the walking distance of the site, as well as the open space and balconies that are permitted in each unit. And finally, the size, to promote desirable visual environment, to create a developed techniques and good civic design, please.
Would you ready development?
To promote a desirable visual environment, to create a developed techniques and good civic design, please. Yes, you saw in the architectural plans, the building height has been lowered, and the rooftop terrace that are replaced with a, a roof, which will fit in well with the neighborhood and the aesthetics of the neighborhood. And the aesthetic of this building still doesn't require open space, or, open balconies and open spaces around the building. With that in hand, the negative criteria, it has mitigated, reduction of the, the application, it's mitigated because of the, of the space within walking distance of the site, because of the renovation of the commercial areas surrounding this area, and because of these set improvements that are proposed with the new architectural plans. Benefits of the creation, it's only in substantial ally with the detriment on the C2 grounds.
Thank you. I have another question, it's just, I'm just, for.
Commissioners, any questions for the, here?
Yes, I have a question.
Commissioners, comment?
Underhand, how did you get this one? On your site plan, you have designations one, two, and three on parking stalls. What's that mean?
The, the designations are really just accounting parking spaces and groupings. It's not, parts of parking designations per se, it's the counting of parking spaces in the groups. You can see there are every three spaces or so, there's a, a blank space or two feet open in between, that's a lot of the problems with the support structures, or really just counting the spaces in those groups.
Well, I mean, anyone may be fair, so much information, I'm totally, really confused. Again, another, Commissioner Calhoun, would you please? I'd like to know your opinion on this project. Have the variances improved? What is your opinion from 2006 to, to 12?
Just really, I don't know what's the difference, we could do applications, you know, just like the option units, the variance, which look pretty similar. Really, the only, I think the only significant difference really is the amount of parking space, and it has some amenities that they have eliminated, they, the, 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 the power of the space, the act of, mitigate the act of use of balconies, and it does have some lawn area that does actually make the criteria for the space. Overall, I don't want to see that much of a difference between the modifications. I think this is a little bit less than offense, it brings down, I think, a bit. Overall, I don't want to see so much of a difference.
Okay, okay, okay. Commissioners, any other questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Basically, was the footprint of the previous application area at this point, in area and height?
In area, now, as I mentioned, the, 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 was folded just by a couple feet. So the, the footprint that you see in the, the tan shade of the wood there is essentially the same footprint. It's the height that's been reduced by two stories.
Okay, just a, a, um, the, the building is actually covering the whole lot?
It's covering, yes.
What are you doing with the buffering against the other property or your properties? Are you putting up a fence? Is there a space for a fence?
There is a space for a fence, there's, there's two and a half feet between the parking and the property line, and we will be, as we put on the scallop, in the view letter, we will be providing a fence for the, for the property that will screen the parking and screen the lower level.
What, what type of fence?
Probably a, a, stop hangar, a real fence.
And... In, in, in your opinion, is this building, I know that you testify, everything that you testify in favor of the building, but I'm going to ask you straight out, do you think that this building is not too big for this lot?
I don't, it, it meets, by, by my standpoint, it meets the, 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 for you.
Open space, you testified before, I did not understand everything that you were saying. You have no, basically, very small amount of open space. Can you elaborate on that? Can you, how can you mitigate that again a little bit?
Sure, and some of what I did, some of the technical crucial had to, had to be presented, but to, to boil it down, if you will. The open space is obviously required for, as an amenity for the residents.
I'm, I'm not really looking for the reasons why it is required, it is required. You have very little open space. Is there anything that you can do to enhance the open space?
The open space, again, one for the rooftop terrace that's been eliminated, is a little of the building that changed the roof design. The open space is consistent with the previous plan, which is a thousand for each unit, and the front area of the space, the uniqueness of this project, as far as open space, its earliest location, where it's very proximate to some, some significant part of space, so there is, there's a public open space.
With your, with all your respect, on the side, what is the open space on the side of the apartment, six blocks away? What is the open space on the side?
The open space is measured by the area in front of the building, the whole area in front of the building, and by the, each of the balconies or location.
All right, that's all the questions over here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any other questions?
We have no further witnesses at this time, and certainly, if there's further questions, all the witnesses are here, they can answer any further questions.
Are there any members of the audience that wish to testify on either for or against this application, if you just step forward? Seeing none, Commissioners, any comments? Commissioners, a comment?
Mr. Chairman, I think there are two color levels, comments. Project is less dense, it was a project that was approved back in 2006, six stories, now it's down, it's cut down to four stories, units are also cut down. Times weren't economically good at those days, understandable. Mr. Chairman, I, I think it's a decent project, a good project, I think we should pursue.
Again, you want some?
Mr. Chairman, the only thing I like about this project is that it's less than what it was approved before, I still think it's an overbuild. However, since we approve a bigger project, I will be favorable.
I'm clear.
Let me just say that beyond the obvious here, where we've significantly reduced the height of the building, the other thing that we have to take into consideration here is fact that each one of these units is significantly smaller than it was originally designed back in 2006. That in turn, will allow for less of a density within each unit, which will stop people from, instead of living, you know, six, three people in one of these units, maybe only three or four will be there, reducing, you know, eh, a, a significant amount of, of, of people within each unit. I also am in favor of, of this current scope of this application. Commissioners, is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Heady?
Say.
Seconded by Commissioner McCallum, Madam Secretary, go for it.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner McCallum?
Aye.
Commissioner Heady?
Aye.
Commissioner Dixon?
Aye.
Commissioner Connell?
Aye.
Commissioner Valdez?
Aye.
Chairman Zemel?
Aye.
Thank you very much.